Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the November 22nd, 2016, meeting of the Huntsville City Planning Commission. I am Gary Whitley, the Vice Chair of the Commission, and I will start with the introductions of the fellow commissioners, starting on my right, your left.
Kelly Scrimsher.
Carlos Matthews.
Donna Hendricks.
TJ Mears.
Sally Warden.
Wes Tillery.
Peggy Richard.
Kyle Collins.
Michelle Jordan, Planning Director.
And we also have a city attorney with us, Claudia Anderson, to assist us here in the rear so that we are in compliance. First, I'd like to call for the adoption of the minutes from our October 25th, 2016 meeting. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Item one on the agenda is our public hearings. Members of the public, if you're here to speak to any of these items, once the item is called, if you will take a mic to either side of the room and if you will state your name and then your address for the record for that particular item. We will start with item number one that is listed, Chase Farms at Greenbrier, Phase Six, a minor. Ms. Nichols?
This property is currently split zoned between Highway Business C4 District and Commercial Industrial Park District. This property is approximately eighty-six point two eight acres, and this is a combination of three lots.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public to speak to item one, Chase Farms at Greenbrier, Phase Six? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item number two, City Center, a minor.
This property is currently zoned, uh, excuse me, General Business C3 District. It's approximately seven point eight nine acres. This is a layout of two lots.
Is there anyone here to speak to item number two, City Center, a minor? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jackie Reed, 303 Jack Coleman. Where is City Center? More than one location?
Ms. Reed, this is, uh, the area that you see here highlighted in the orange. This is the City Center property that's, uh, on the agenda tonight for layout. It's two lots, um, basically splitting the property in half. This is Big Spring Park in this area. You have the Embassy Suites across the street, as well as you have the VBC, um, area here.
Is, is this where the old holiday home?
Yes, ma'am, this is the old, this is the old Hilton Holiday Inn site.
So, does that include, um, Quiddick Center in the other building too?
Uh, no, ma'am, it does not.
Not tonight? Seven something acres, you said?
Yes, seven point eight nine acres, Ms. Reed.
Is there anyone else here to speak to item number two, City Center? Ms. Reed, do you have any further questions? Okay. Okay. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item number three, Holmes Avenue Commons, a minor. Ms. Nichols?
This property is also zoned, General Business C3 District. This is approximately zero point four acres. This is a combination of, uh, four lots. The item on the table tonight is for layout. This will be combining four individual parcels into one large lot.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to item number three, Holmes Avenue Commons? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I guess I gotta ask you about this. This is on Holmes Avenue near, uh, Butler.
Um, no, ma'am, this is the corner of Green Street and Holmes Avenue. It's currently a vacant parking lot. It's across from Below the Radar, um, and also next door to the Huntsville Housing Authority, um, offices.
Downtown, uh?
It's downtown, Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to item number three? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item four, Huntsville Park, a re-subdivision of Lot Eight and Lot Nine, Block Twenty-Seven, a minor.
This property is currently zoned Residence One B. It's approximately three point five four acres. There is a waiver on this property for angle of side lot lines between Lots One and Two. There was a variance granted on this property in October 2016 for, uh, PVA landscape, a PVA landscaping buffer between Lots One and Two.
Is there anyone here to speak to item number four? Ms. Reed?
I've just pulled a question tonight, aren't I? This is, is this the, uh, the property you were explaining to us a few minutes ago about the church?
Um, no, ma'am, that will be under, um, our zoning public hearing portion.
Is this one Holmes Avenue downtown too?
Um, no, ma'am, this is on, uh, near the intersection of Drake and Trianna.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak to item number four? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item five, The Island at the Reserve.
This property is currently zoned Residence Two A. It's approximately twenty-seven point eight nine acres. This is a re-preliminary of sixty-four lots. This property was, had an origin, original preliminary, uh, approval in June 2013, and it was for sixty-four lots. That preliminary has expired, thus, uh, requiring a new re-preliminary approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to item number five, The Island at the Reserve? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item six, Linden, Lot Three, re-subdivision, a re-subdivision of Lot Three of Linden and Jones Valley, a minor.
This property is zoned planned development. It's approximately forty-six point two-three acres. This property was originally final in June 2014, and it is in order for layout for two lots. And there is also a waiver for angle side lot line between Lot One and Track One.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak to item number six, Linden, Lot Three, re-subdivision? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item seven, Seager's Trail subdivision.
This item is zoned Residence Two District. It is up for preliminary for fifty-seven lots. The property is approximately thirty-two point five acres. The original layout was submitted and approved in September 2016.
Is there anyone here to speak to item number seven, Seager's Trail subdivision? Yes, sir, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Adam Darrow, 10118 Brandywine Drive Southeast. Uh, I am the attorney for Old Cobblestone Community Association, and they wanted me to speak briefly to a concern they have regarding this plat. This plat, when completed, if you, do you mind zooming out just a, just a brief minute? All right. Old Cobblestone, you see, is the association that writes directly below that. Uh, this plat, when completed, is going to stub in, in two locations, to Old Cobblestone. Uh, that road on the left is Seager's, and the road above is Hardeman. Now, the problem that my clients have is that the main county line traffic that comes to these two locations comes up Seager's and, and into Old Cobblestone. And basically, what this is going to cause is all county line traffic will route through Old Cobblestone and then into Seager's, because that'll be a quicker route, as opposed to going all the way down to Hardeman and turning right. So, this is actually exacerbated by the fact there's a hill that goes up Seager's, and, and actually, the entrance to Old Cobblestone is on, on a hill. Uh, Old Cobblestone is going to, when it's, when it's finished out, serve two-hundred-and-two homes. There are about seventy-five homes right now, and Seager's Trail is going to have a hundred and fourteen more homes. So, in total, that means there are about three-hundred-and-sixteen homes that we're going to be using the same entrance every morning and evening, uh, because that's going to be the quicker entrance to get to County Line Road. Uh, so that's why my clients are concerned. This is going to cause traffic problems. This is going to cause, uh, degradation of our entrance. There's no traffic light at the entrance to, uh, to Old Cobblestone, and it's actually, it's down a hill, uh, it's, it's a problem. So, we're requesting that this plat include a road, an entrance onto Seager's, at either Blythe Row, which would actually put it past the hill, or possibly even Paseo Road. Uh, so, we're requesting that this plat be disapproved or conditionally approved upon the inclusion of an entrance onto Seager's.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to item number seven? Ms. Nichols, do we have any additional comments from, uh, Traffic Engineering or anything regarding this?
Yes, I'm going, I will defer to, uh, the Traffic Engineering Department. They can, uh, better speak to the traffic concerns addressed by the Homeowners Association.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Nene. I work for the Traffic Engineering Department. Um, we, uh, our department went out to Seager's and reviewed the complaint that you had in question regarding the side distance issue, and we didn't find any, um, side distance obstructions. And, uh, I was made aware by planning that it had been approved in 2007, and at the time, this hill had been cut down to alleviate the side distance issue. As for the path of least resistance for motorists using the subdivision, I wouldn't be aware of it. We haven't looked at any trip generation models that would show us where drivers would go through, but, um, we don't think it'll be a problem.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, is there anyone else that would like to speak on the record regarding item seven? Ms. Reed?
Okay, sorry. I, I just wanted to, to request, um, if I could, uh, approach and, and, uh, provide this, it's a, it's simply a letter and a petition signed by seventy-seven of my clients requesting the planning committee.
Yes, Ms. Nichols will collect that from you. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to item seven? Yes, Jim?
Yes, Mr. Whitley, and the, from the Planning Department perspective, uh, when Old Cobblestone was built, there, there were two stubs, a, as they noted, to the north, uh, for future development. And as, old Cobblestone itself grows to the east, it's going to experience more homes, uh, over two-hundred, which requires an additional access point. So, they'll need an additional access point for their own homes that are going to be developed to the east. The subdivision to the north that's here in question tonight, uh, you know, we're not going to design the subdivision, we just review what they've presented to us. The engineer's here, you can ask him questions about his specific design, uh, but it does meet our regs in terms of design and access.
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
I guess I live in everybody's neighborhood. When I see this come into the City Council, or the planning, in my opinion, you need to postpone this. Go to the council, try to work out a road. What I see here is a traffic mess, and that needs to be worked out before this is ever brought to planning. I know planning recommends this and that and the other, but you need to listen to the neighborhoods, you need to listen to the lawyer, and you need to do some common-sense thinking. And that don't happen too much, in my opinion. But this needs to be postponed, take it to the council, let the lawyer and the people take it before the council. Hold somebody's feet to the fire, and let's be accountable. But, but this does look like a traffic mess, and you say you're going to fix it after you pass this tonight. Fix it before you pass it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. The Commission will deliberate on this item once it's on the agenda later this evening. Is there anyone else here to speak to item seven? Yes, sir, please address the podium and give us your name and address.
Ed Collins, 28658 Garden Hills Road. Speaking to the two stub streets, um, I'm sure that that's something we see almost on every plat, because we need that connectivity. And I'm sure probably at the time, no one knew that there was going to be a subdivision there. They probably surmised that there would be at some point, but I don't think anyone ever thought that they'd only put one, uh, entrance in, um, up on Hardeman Road, which is a very difficult road in itself, uh, coming to and from on that. So, about two-hundred houses are being put in up there, and, um, it just, it just kind of amazes me that there wouldn't be another one there. There's certainly enough room, uh, with very minor dirt work to make that happen. I, I just, it just looks like an awfully hard strain on our community, and I, I'm not trying to discount connectivity. However, again, I don't think we'd ever thought that we'd have something like this. I'm mentioning traffic studies, um, I think it would be interesting to see a traffic study. I don't know how you would, I don't know how you would kind of extrapolate that out for what's to come, but we have to remember, we've got a brand-new interchange at 565. 565 to County Line, to Old Highway Twenty, up Seager's, into our subdivision, north into that one. This just doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't pass the smell test. It needs something, it needs something else, and, uh, I'd ask you not to rush to judgment on this one, to have some consideration, not consideration, but to take another look and protect those of us who live here in the community, and those of us who will live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to this item? Yes, sir, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Collins. I live at 28647 Cobble Creek Road in Madison. I am a president of Old Cobblestone. Uh, the one point that I would like to add is about the entrance. There is a definite safety issue with this entrance. Our entrance into Old Cobblestone is at the top of a hill. On three occasions, since I have lived there for two years, I have almost been hit head-on by cars coming up Seager Road from the south heading north. So, if you are coming from the north to the south, turning left into the Old Cobblestone Development, there is a turn line. When you pull into that turn line, cars approaching from the south going north, if they are behind somebody turning into the development, they often swing left into that turn line, because they cannot see the car sitting in the turn line, waiting to turn left into the development from the opposite direction. So, on three occasions, I have almost been hit. My suggestion is that as traffic increases, because the amount of cars going in and out of that entrance, that safety problem is also going to be exacerbated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to this item? Yes, sir, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ben Ruddlin. I live at 28670 Garden Hills Road. If I could, uh, ask the lady to draw in so you could see Hardeman Road, we might see an idea, so you can maybe tighten it as, as opposed to expand it? I'm sorry, make the picture smaller. A little bit more? Okay, okay. So, you see, uh, I think it's, the label is 121. Hardeman Road is maybe in need of its repair, but there's also a lot of, uh, homes being built there, and it's also a very winding road. You got, uh, one-ninety-degree turn and several other turns along the way. And as Mr. Collins stated, since the interchange has been put in at County Line Road, Old Highway Twenty is the road of choice. Straight road, take a right on Seager's, it gets you here so much quicker than going all the way down, um, past Palmer Road, taking a left on Hardeman to get into these areas. So, what he's saying, and what I agree with, is the entrance into Old Cobblestone is going to be the entrance of choice, because it's going to be so much easier. We're asking, have them put another entrance in there and not use ours, because that's just going to make it a safety issue, not to mention, as Mr. Collins has mentioned, an issue there, turning in and out with traffic coming and going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to this issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item number eight is the Sparks Farm, a minor.
This property is up for layout approval. It's two lots. The property is currently zoned Residence One A District. It's approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-three point six eight acres, and there is a, uh, waiver request for angle side lot line on Lots One and Two.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to, uh, item number eight, Sparks Farm, a minor? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item nine, Taylor Court Commercial Subdivision?
This property is up for layout for sixteen lots and preliminary for two lots. This property is currently zoned Highway Business C4 District. It's approximately twenty-three point six nine acres. The preliminary portion of two lots is approximately two acres, and there is a waiver for double four-inch lots, fifteen and sixteen.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Item number nine, the Taylor Court Commercial Subdivision? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. That brings us to item ten, location, character, and extent. The first item is the Alabama A&amp;M New Residence Hall, number eight fifty-six. Is there anyone here to speak to that item? Seeing none, the pub-
Yes, um, Mr. Chair, um, staff does recommend that this item be continued to the December twentieth Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
So, we'll hold over the public hearing until that time.
Okay, we will hold the public hearing then for item ten A, Alabama A&amp;M New Residence Hall, number eight fifty-six. Takes us to ten B, Spaces Sculpture Trail, 2016, number eight fifty-seven. Is there anyone here to speak, uh, to this item?
Um, it's Allison here with the Arts Council. The four locations in, uh, question, basically, the Arts Council would like to put out four new sculptures. The, the, uh, depiction on the screen identifies those locations, as well as there are, um, photos of what those particular art pieces, pieces will resemble.
Thank you.
And this is around the Courtside Square.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Ms. Reed?
Tell her to slow down when she's explaining this stuff. You run through it so fast, I can't figure out where you're putting what. Anyway, thank you. Uh, so, we're putting, uh, art in the park over there?
No, ma'am, they, these are, she said around the, the Courthouse Square.
Mercy. We're not going to block off the Courthouse, are we?
No, ma'am, Ms. Reed, so if you, as you've been driving around the Courthouse Square, you'll notice there are already art pieces there, they're just changing them out for different pieces.
Okay. I don't have a problem with you setting them up, thank you.
No problem. Anyone else here to speak to this item? Item ten B. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item ten C, the Huntsville-Madison Airport Warehouse Edition for the Port of Huntsville, number eight fifty-eight, and?
Rodney Stiegl with the Huntsville-Madison County Airport Authority, um, will give a little bit more detail on this particular request.
Thank you, Mr. Stiegl.
Mr. Steger, my name's Rodney Steger. I'm not with, I'm not with the Airport Authority, I'm with Fuquay and Partners Architects representing the design team for the project. This is a warehouse expansion of an existing facility that is, that located at the airport for the purpose of handling goods that will be coming, uh, from flights, primarily for Panalpina, as one of the current tenants of this building. So, we'll be adding to that warehouse facility about eighteen, nineteen thousand square feet of warehouse space that ultimately might be a cooler for the purposes of handling produce that would come into Huntsville internationally and be distributed through trucks, uh, out the other end, once they've gone through customs. So, that comprises pretty much the entirety of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Steger. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Item ten C, Huntsville-Madison Airport Warehouse Edition for the Port of Huntsville. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item eleven is our zoning portion. Item eleven A, the Jordan Park Rezoning, number sixteen twenty?
This request is located on the west side of Jordan Lane and south of Dycheel Drive. This property is currently zoned Highway, excuse me, it's currently zoned Residence Two A District. It is currently a vacant church, as the church has relocated. Um, the petitioner has requested to rezone the property from R2A to Neighborhood Business C1 District. There is C1 that neighbors this property, as well as there is Neighborhood Business C2 District across the street. There's a proposed user for this property, and under the current zoning designation, the proposed use cannot go there, as this particular use does not accommodate any type of medical or office facilities.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to item eleven A, Jordan Park Rezoning? Yes, Ms. Reed?
Ready him to speak, sir.
Okay. Sir, if you'll give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Clyde Luttrell. I have the property, uh, twenty-two oh-four Jordan Lane. There's four houses that face Jordan Lane between that I-565 and down to where the church is at. Uh, my concern is, the Walmart put in a facility over there, and they have their gassing center on, facing Jordan, and there's already a lot of traffic in that center turn lane that goes into Walmart. If there is something put into the church where you have a higher traffic area, my concern is, uh, going into my property, either you've got to use that center lane if you're going, uh, north on Jordan Lane to turn in to the property there. That also, that center lane is used for the fueling center for Walmart, and so, if you add another commercial venture in there towards a high-traffic area, then that center lane's going to be very congested.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak to this item? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Reed?
I just was wondering whether a traffic study done, even when Walmart was put in out there? I understood that they didn't need one because of a traffic problem on that corner there, on the corner of Jordan. I understand they didn't need one when the Walmart was put in, but was all the neighbors notified of this sale of this church that lives in that neighborhood? Was everybody notified with a certified letter that what was going on, going to happen tonight on this church and this property? Because I know the church was against Walmart, we all were, but you put it in anyway, so...
Uh, Ms. Reed, I believe the church you may be speaking of is the, the church on the other side? This church, I understand, has been vacant, uh, but Jim McGuffey from Planning will, uh, share some details with us?
Yeah, the church in opposition was on Seventeenth Street, not the church for rezoning tonight. The contract is a private-party action, and nobody's required to know, uh, those two parties until that contract is final, if they choose to, to review the recording deed. Uh, the rezoning, everybody's notified that it joins this property. So, you know, taking that into consideration, the two properties that abut this are commercially zoned, C1, C2. There's a fire station across the street, and then an access point into the fueling center, as the gentleman mentioned. So, we're just continuing C1 to the north to, uh, this vacant church that's for sale.
But the fire station's not a part of, none of this, right?
No, ma'am.
The fire station's across the street.
I know.
And so, we-
I'm guarding it pretty close.
Yes, we know that, that the neighbors have been notified, because Mister, he's here, so we can, we know that that, that-
My question is, have they done a traffic study out there? Like this gentleman said, you didn't do one for Walmart.
Walmart did a traffic study, and our Traffic Engineering Department reviewed it and approved it, based on the numbers that was presented by the traffic engineer.
So, Walmart does the traffic study?
Walmart did the traffic study for their, for their use.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is a rezoning.
I hear you, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item eleven B is the Little Cove Zoning, number sixteen twenty-two.
This is newly annexed property. This property is located on the south side of Little Cove Road and west of Old Gate Lane. This property is approximately one point one-six acres. The proposed zoning designation for this property is Residence One A District, which is consistent with the other single-family detached dwellings that are nearby, as well as the zoning designation across the street.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to item eleven B, Little Cove Zoning, number sixteen twenty-two? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Item twelve is a master plan update, Cummings Research Park. Ms. Coetz, will you give us that update? Thank you.
I'd like to provide you an update on the Cummings Research Park master plan. Uh, September of 2015 through May of 2016, our consultant team, uh, met with the CRP property owners, as well as CEOs, employees in the park, commercial property brokers, and others throughout the park, to determine what the next fifty years of Cummings Research Park would look like. Uh, we unveiled a draft master plan in May of this year, and spent the summer doing public review and comment periods with those stakeholders, as well as others that were outside of the park, to take feedback and suggestions, and so, uh, we have now gone through that draft master plan, made some modifications based on that feedback from those stakeholders, and wanted to walk you through what that final plan is for consideration of approval and adoption by this body.
Okay.
Uh, when we went through this plan, we wanted to get back to several fundamentals for Cummings Research Park. One of those is that Cummings Research Park has been propelling science since nineteen sixty-two. In looking at how we- In looking at how we wanted Cummings Research Park to redevelop and develop going forward, we really wanted the park to meet all life cycles of businesses so that we had a flow of innovation as the park redeveloped and developed going forward. So that, for example, if you began to think about how a company started, they might start out of research based at UAH or in partnership with Calhoun Community College. They would start that business and have a place to locate in a startup district inside Cummings Research Park in a very collaborative and encouraging and supportive environment. And say that company began to become successful and they would enter into a new area of the park, a scale-up area. Again, completely different to identify and work with their needs for collaborative areas, partnerships, and programming. And ultimately, we would all like to see those companies that begin here to become those apex companies located in CRP West. So that was the flow of innovation that we would really like to see inside the park that allows us to have all types, sizes of companies successfully locate and grow inside Cummings Research Park. So our final CRP master plan takes fifty to sixty years to ultimately arrive to with the idea that every five to ten years, we'll take a look at this plan and make modifications as necessary. I wanted to walk through what those startup, scale-up, and larger apex company locations look like. The best way to do that is to give you pictures of what they currently look like now and what they would look like in the future. This is the old Chrysler facility located in Cummings Research Park East. It is a former manufacturing facility that has been sitting empty for many years. We would propose turning this into a Maker Hacker Village where we have the ability for maker spaces, for cyber war rooms to coordinate work done at UAH's Cyber Research Center with our cyber patriot teams in our high schools and where we'd also have spaces for those startup companies, those that have graduated from our two business incubators in the park. They would have a place to locate to with programming and small offices that lower their risk of entry into that commercial market space. Around that Maker Hacker Village would be mixed-use areas. Mixed-use areas to support entrepreneurial development. So you could see coffee shops. You could see perhaps a small amount of housing specifically for entrepreneurs only. And so we have actually started with some of this, with some rezoning that has taken place adjacent to this property as well. So we are moving towards that and wanting to be able to attract and start growing those companies here. The Cummings Scale-Up District is an area that abuts the Madison Square Mall redevelopment. This area would be more lot-and-block streetscapes, much higher density. It would have your outdoor cafes. It would have perhaps lab spaces that could be shared by companies, spaces for our food trucks to locate. It would have, all of these areas would have sidewalks and greenways and parks added in. Many areas over in CRP East currently don't have sidewalks. And so we began to start to activate this area as well as make this area conducive to recruit those growing businesses. If you were to look at what some of our mixed-use areas in that east would look like, they could look something like this where you have several stories, you have a courtyard that has outdoor cafes. Over time, you utilize the rooftops as well, and you have on-street parking. Your parking areas going forward might look like an occasional parking garage, even though from the outside, it wouldn't look like such. Your streetscape would look like this with proposed guidelines, design guidelines. Your buildings would go to the wide sidewalks. You would have the ability for bicycle lanes, on-street parking, bus rapid transit particularly in that Holmes Avenue corridor, as has been discussed by the city. If you were to activate that mixed-use node at night, it could look like this inside the park where colleagues and other professionals and their families and friends have a place to leave their office and come to and perhaps a beer garden in the center of the park. When we transition over to Cummings Research Park West, these are where those larger apex companies already exist. And so for this area, it really is about activating many of the amenities in this area. And so that means putting in your pedestrian and bicycle networks inside the medians. It means bringing in public art for, that's more connected to the park than public art maybe outside of the park. So inside the park, our public art would be indicative of the kinds of technologies and products that our companies in our park have created and will create going forward. We propose extending a mixed-use area from Bridge Street to the lake. So you begin to have a waterfront area that has a hotel and a restaurant, wide pathways, green space where people, colleagues can come and network right on the water, where you've got green space that allows families to come and where you can utilize the lakes with kayaks or with fishing or, as the case may be in this particular rendering, which are always pretty, it has drones as well, which is a big hobby and growing hobby for our geeks and nerds that we love in the park. When we look at the other development in Cummings Research Park is looking at those landmark companies, those companies that are a thousand people or more. We know that recruiting those companies takes a long time, but we wanted to signify certain areas inside the West that are for those companies. If we look at Adtran as our model, Adtran has two very large buildings. They also have a lake that is beautifully maintained and open to the public to use. And so looking at that model, we would set aside three sites along the Explor Boulevard Loop that would be for landmark sites. Those companies with a thousand people or more. And the development requirements would be slightly different in that as they develop their land, they would be required to do water retention on their site, which they have to do anyway. But our water retention requirements would be that they would have to have a water feature that is open to the public. And so it could look something like this where you see more buildings that are glass on the exterior, but also that this water feature has the walkways and that might have art in the middle that's indicative of the kind of work that is done inside that building. We have a five-year work plan for the Cummings Research Park Master Plan, really looking at those catalyst projects, those that can have the most impact to the companies that are currently located in the park, the employees that currently are located in the park, and those companies that we are currently trying to recruit to Cummings Research Park. To do a little in brief, in terms of the guidelines, the design guidelines, CRP East becomes real startup and growth opportunities. Much more inclusive, it's about redevelopment in CRP East. It's a collaborative district with higher-density opportunities for mixed-use and strategic areas and substantial changes to zoning would be required in east versus west, which is much more of your corporate campus. It is exclusive, new construction, activating that landscape, lower density, still research-use focused, and minimal changes to zoning would be required to make the plan in CRP West. Through this master plan process, we went through a very comprehensive design guidelines. And so it looks at from the park level in terms of looking at districts and sub-districts and the public realm and how to bring continuity of an identity to the park. But it also talks about site types and layouts and design of buildings, aesthetics, materials. And ultimately, what we have is a comprehensive guidance for modifying our existing zoning and creating this really vibrant and active research park where companies want to grow and locate. Through this process, just quickly, we went through a rebranding to ensure that the way we were perceived was also very vibrant and that really spoke to what Cummings Research Park was about, why it was so special, why these companies chose to locate here. And we said we wanted the park to be connected. We wanted it to have a community and a culture of collaboration. And nothing is more connected than a circle. And so we went through not only a rebrand from the standpoint of a logo, very classic, but that spoke to those young professionals that we're trying to recruit with a very vibrant color palette. But most importantly, I would like to say that we didn't just go and do a logo. We also got back to some of those fundamental principles about what makes the park special. So we have, as I said, have been propelling science since nineteen sixty-two, but we are driven by science and powered by people, which is something that's been the case since nineteen sixty-two. Globally focused, but yet we're locally fueled. And some of those key characteristics that make the park a really special place is what we wanted to get back to. And that in brief is a brief recap of the master plan. As I mentioned, we went through and did some modifications of the plan. That simply was moving a landmark location. It was also taking one of our greenway connections and just making that align more closely with Hudson Alpha's property and a few other small changes as it relates to setbacks in the west to reduce the setbacks from one fifty to one hundred in the west and a few other minor changes going forward. But ultimately, the draft plan as rolled out in May is about ninety percent the same plan that we have as the final.
Thank you. Stay right there. Is there anyone here to speak to item twelve? Please use one of the mics and state your name and address for the record.
I have as much as a presentation as she does. I've been fighting this for a year, ever since you all. Chamber of Commerce was paid a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars by the city to come up with the master plan for Cummings Research Park. Why do you want to? The public wasn't invited. The public didn't have a thing to say with this. I tried to find out when industrial development park met, when you all met, and when could anybody come and talk to you about it? Cummings Research Park, I worked there. It's the second-largest research park in the nation. People still work there. We tear up the park down here in green space, but yet we want to go out there and build a path where people can party hard and drink and tear up the park. And then Sears and Pennies have been evicted. And I know a big developer that's in with the good old boy system has evicted everybody out of that mall. They don't even want them in this city anymore. That's a fact. Nobody didn't go in there because nobody wouldn't give them the lease. Mid-city, mid-city who's in with the good city boys are gonna develop a bridge street. I see the lake. I see everything you're gonna do out there. So why are they down here tonight and what are they asking for? The development to go forward? I'm not through with this yet.
Yes ma'am, this is a master plan update as to where they are in the process.
What are they asking for tonight?
Ms. Reed, they didn't, excuse, Mr. Chair.
Are you changing the zoning? Are you changing the plant? Are you building them five to six hundred houses out there yet?
No ma'am, we are simply asking for the final master plan to be approved and adopted. This is not, zoning ordinances have not been written, the new zoning ordinances or revised zoning ordinances, that will come at a later date. This is simply the plan going forward. We had a twelve-week public review and comment period with multiple options for people to weigh in and heard from a number of people. And we have been very strategic to ensure that the mixed-use areas that are located in the park are done in a way that is very strategic, very thoughtful, in the right places and not everywhere. And we know based on the companies that we have been recruiting for the last few years and the companies that we are currently recruiting that these type of areas are the areas where they are looking to grow and to locate.
I got some more questions. Can I have some more questions? I'm sorry I'm being ugly tonight.
No, Ms. Reed, I'm gonna let Ms. Jordan respond first before you can go with your follow-up questions. Okay?
Mr. Chair, I believe the presentation tonight was for information for your approval. I'm not sure that I follow exactly Ms. Reed's question. I don't think, I don't think the Chamber of Commerce is asking for anything other than approval of the master plan tonight.
To go forward with the master plan? Is that what you said?
Yes.
I'm against that. You need to wait till after Christmas and let me absorb this a little bit more. Because I've been on to this and you know I have for a long time. I asked the planning, every meeting she has right there, is the zoning and the houses and the changes for Research Park on there tonight? You need to let this rest and let the public absorb it. Let her bring this to the city council and present it to the council. They've never seen it. The public's never seen it. They need to know what's going on in the city. This is major. This is a disaster.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Reed, I'm sorry that you weren't aware of maybe any of the public meetings that were held. Erin, I think you've already mentioned, there were several. You know, unfortunately, it appears that maybe you missed those meetings, but staff and the chamber and city council and elected officials, I believe, feel confident that the public was given an opportunity to participate.
The public was never invited to any meetings, ma'am. I'm sorry.
And Ms. Reed, also, as standard procedure here with Planning Commission, once an item leaves from here, then it goes to city council for review, but this item will not do that. But it's also already been presented to the board, the Research Park Board as well, so I just wanted to-
Well, that's I've been trying to find out when they have them. When could you come? I heard Mayor Battle out there when he gave his little talk with the chamber when they were paid and they gave their presentation. I showed up. Nobody invited the public. I happened to hear about it. So when you say the public's been invited? I am the public. I've not heard a word about it.
Ms. Reed, I will let Erin, if she could, to, you all can go out into the hallway and she can give you the list of the dates and times when those meetings were held, if that may help to recall.
It won't.
If you attended or did not attend, I'm sure Erin has that information here that she can share with you.
Well, may I ask the chamber lady one thing? Do Teladine Brown and any of those people out there, have they all agreed? Those property owners, has everybody been notified that's got property for sale or for rent? Why we didn't put Polaris out there? Why don't we put GE out there? Why did our city not try to fill up that park?
And Ms. Reed, I'm sorry, Erin, your questions-
I'll hush, but I'll be back, trust me. Bye.
Yes, your questions are directed to the chair for tonight's meeting.
Erin, do you have anything else?
Yes, to the most recent question about why certain industries were not located in the park. Those industries did not meet the zoning ordinances for use in the park and that's why they were not located out there. In terms of the public meetings, we had multiple public meetings. We invited all of our property owners as well as multiple times and those property owners that were able to meet showed up. We also received nearly thirty media stories about this. We had more than twenty-one focus groups and stakeholder meetings. We had three different public review and comment periods over the entire year-long process. And so we know and the CRP Board as well as others felt like that the public and those stakeholders were given many opportunities to weigh in. We also had an email address. We had the plan online as well so that we made available all opportunities for the public to weigh in and to provide feedback throughout this process.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you. Ms. Reed, yes, do you have another comment?
I would just like for the chamber and the board, the industrial development board, if that's the one you met with and everybody-
No ma'am, Ms. Reed, so this is the Cummings-
I'd like to go to some of those meetings before this is passed.
So this is the Cummings Research Park Board, not the industrial development-
Whoever, whichever one they're working with.
This is the Cummings, that would have been the Cummings Research Park Board. And Ms. Erin can show you the meetings that were held and the dates.
The CRP Board meetings as well as the Industrial Development Board meetings are-
Where they advertised. We got Channel forty-two and all I see is socializing. I never see that on Channel forty-two and that's a local.
If you have questions directly about the update, I'm happy to facilitate and direct those.
Are you gonna change that zoning tonight?
So the commission will deliberate that later in the agenda. But in the short term, Ms. Erin is happy to show you those, that meeting schedule of those public meetings as well as-
After you vote?
Board meetings. She can show you that now.
After you vote?
No, so we will not deliberate this item until later in the agenda, after location character extent. It is item four on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
If you vote, I don't want to see the meetings. I'll still be, I'll be on the news.
I think her question is, are we going to change the zoning tonight and that's a no?
No, no, there'll be no zoning changes tonight. Anyone else here to speak to item twelve, master plan update? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. That takes us to the item two subdivisions and subdivision committee report. Subdivision Committee Chair, okay Kyle, you are up and Ashley's ready.
Thank you, Chairman. The subdivision committee met on November the sixteenth. And the following is the recommendations. Item one, Chase Farms at Greenbrier Phase Six, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on three lots with a waiver on the non-perpendicular lot line between lots five and six and double-fronted lot eight.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
Item number two is City Center Minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots one and two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Item passes.
Item number three, East Gate Subdivision, formerly Hobstone, is presented for final approval on sixty-seven lots.
Ms. Jordan is in order for final approval.
Yes, it's in order with improvements, sidewalks, and landscaping to be installed by November sixteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from this vote.
Yes ma'am. You'll note that for the minutes, she has- Yes ma'am. You'll note that for the minutes, she has recused. All those in favor? Any opposed? The item passes.
Item number four is Holmes Avenue Commons, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on one lot with a waiver on the utility and drainage easement around perimeter of lot one.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The item passes.
Item number five is Huntsville Park, re-subdivision of lot eight and lot nine, block twenty-seven, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots one and two.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number six, the island at the reserve. The committee recommends preliminary approval on sixty-four lots.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? Ms. Nichols, I, the chair has a question. Uh, this item is a re-p preliminary from what year the, the original?
The original preliminary was, uh, approved June two thousand thirteen and it was for sixty-four lots.
And I'm drawing on my memory. I think we had some questions about the terrain, um, and possible drainage. Is that still all the same?
Dave Scroggins with, uh, City Engineering will address your concerns.
Thank you, Ashley. So, I was in the engineer for that side of town when this came up the last time, Gary, so I'm not really familiar. I don't remember what those comments were before, but we did look at the drainage for the subdivision. Uh, the engineer of record, you know, they have to go through analysis to determine whether detention is required or not. And the storm system for the streets meets our design criteria and it does.
Okay. All right, and Mr. Muller, is Mr. Muller's here?
He was here earlier. He had to leave.
All right. Thank you. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The item passes.
Item number seven, Linden Lot Three, re-subdivision, re-subdivision of Lot Three of Linden and Jones Valley, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lot one and tract one.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The item passes.
Chairman, I believe this is up for final approval.
Ms. Jordan, is it in order for final approval?
Yes, it's in order on two lots.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Item passes.
Item number eight, Pebble Creek Phase Three at River Landing, presented for final approval on thirty-one lots.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes, it's in order with improvements and sidewalks to be installed by November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Is there a motion? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Item passes.
Item number nine, Seagull, Seagulls Trail Subdivision, afforded without recommendation pending signature approval from Limestone County Water Authority.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes, um, signature approval has been received and it's now in order for preliminary approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to comment on this. Um, is it, Ms. Nichols, is there any way to pull that back up again?
On, uh, Google Earth?
Uh, Seagulls Trail, yeah, whatever you had last time with the outline.
Sure.
Um, for the record, I will state that I know it meets the regs and it, it, uh, it obviously has been run through the city. And so, um, it all meets what we consider the standards that need to be met. However, there's a group of people here that always, uh, always kind of defer to because they're the ones most affected by it. What, what we decide here tonight probably will not affect me at all, uh, because I live back there, all right? So having said all that, I did want to bring this up. Explain to me, because I'm very confused. The outlined area is where the, uh, request is being made for the subdivision. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and how is it connecting, uh, or is it connecting with the Cobblestone, uh, subdivision?
Jim is gonna give you more details on the stub.
Jim, you are aware I'm an Auburn grad, so you're gonna walk.
I got you, Kyle. Uh, this is just phase one of the, of the overall layout, which will be multiple phases. And so tonight is, is as you see on the screen right now, it's not gonna touch and abut the subdivision that's there, the old cobblestone subdivision.
So the concerns that have been brought for this body tonight is really about a future concern of increased capacity and traffic, correct?
Yes, sir, as it phases through its second or third edition.
Okay.
Jim, before you, Jim, before you leave the podium, uh, audience, uh, this is now the time for the commission to deliberate, so. Jim, before you leave the podium, Ms. Nichols, yes, this image here, pan out just a little bit, and again, my memory. Old Cobblestone, we have reviewed up to phase five and I, and there is, is there a phase six? Okay. Below this orange line here, is that property owned by Old Cobblestone or is that future development for Seagulls? Okay. And then so then Ashley, pan back out. Old Cobblestone will then go where, uh, my cardinal directions are off, uh, to the right, to the east on your screen, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Old Cobblestone is slated to grow in that direction?
Yes.
Now, based on what I'm looking at, is there a road on this east side of Old Cobblestone?
No, sir.
No, not at this time.
So then, okay, so the residents may have brought a point that I have not, uh, previously considered. So as Old Cobblestone grows, and I, I don't know the number between phases one through six, what its total capacity will be. Everyone will then have to use this Old Cobblestone entrance?
The, the Old Cobblestone subdivision back in oh-seven, uh, was owned by a gentleman, uh, who owned the property or had an option on the property to the north, which was his original intent, uh, to develop his property to the north all the way to the North Road.
Okay.
The original layout of Old Cobblestone has a tie to the Northern Road. The owner of Old Cobblestone's property did not, uh, renew his interest in the property to the north and it was sold to another developer. And so the new developer has a different design, uh, which is similar to his, but not the same, and that's what we're seeing tonight.
From a road infrastructure perspective, how different are those two? The original owner and now this new owner?
Well, we have the layout from oh-seven here. Um, it, it does change. There is a tie to the north, but, uh, the houses have a different layout and lots are a little different and the internal drives are, are not the same as the Old Cobblestone layout.
So my, my question is, is that as the Old Cobblestone development grows to the east, that those new residents will have to still enter, exit through this established Old Cobblestone, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, to the north, to the right of this orange square, I don't remember which development phase it is, but isn't there another entrance that will go on Hardeman?
I'm not sure if that city, that that lands even in the city limits of Huntsville. Um, what we're looking at tonight's only in the orange box and the far eastern boundary of that box is the, the boundary of this property.
So whether the, if the current, the owner of Old Cobblestone had retained this portion we're looking at tonight or now we have this new owner, this was originally slated to be for homes.
Yeah, his master plan always included a tie to the north.
Correct. And then the actual Old Cobblestone development grows to the east without any additional infrastructure?
As soon as they hit two hundred houses, they'll be required to have an additional point of access.
Well, there won't be one on the east because there's no road to the east.
You're right.
So then a possible additional entrance for Old Cobblestone will then have to be on Seagulls.
And that's why the two stub streets in Old Cobblestone run north was to get to that tie eventually to the north.
So we will have, okay. Thank you. Any further discussion, anyone else?
Yes, uh, the concern I heard was that, uh, traffic coming from the subdivision we're talking about tonight through the entrance to Old Cobblestone was going to increase and cause a problem for ingress and egress out of the entrance, in and out of the Old Cobblestone entrance. Um, so what I'm seeing now is that there, with this development they were approving, there's no increase in traffic in and out of that entrance. All the people in this new development will have to go north on Hardeman. Is that right?
This phase, yes, sir.
So when the, when the two parcels get connected, at that point, there will have to be another entrance, uh, onto Seagulls. Is that right?
No, they won't have to, they will, they'll have to have the point that you see tonight to the north, Mr. Tillery, but, uh, as this projects south, you can see on both sides of the screen, they'll be tying to Old Cobblestone. There is a subdivision to the east of the boundary of Old Cobblestone that's either in the county or the city of Madison. Um, and eventually we'll, we'll see them tie together as that develops down.
Ashley, go back to the, the plat, please. So scroll, scroll down. What's the, the stub there? Um, Bellwood Lane?
Yes.
That connects directly to the stub to the north on Old Cobblestone?
Yes, sir.
It will eventually, but not in this particular phase.
Right.
So the additional phase of Old Cobblestone, whichever number it is, the next entrance will then be in Old Cobblestone, whatever phase that is, just south of this orange line?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Nay.
We will call for a voice vote, starting with Ms. Krimcher.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
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 Okay, thank you. The item, uh, fails. Ms. Anderson?
Mr. Chairman, simply for the record, you need to state the basis for the disapproval.
The item is disapproved based on the vote of the commission.
And the basis for the disapproval is? I would just let people articulate the basis for disapproval if you would on the record.
Okay, all right. We will do that. So let's start again.
I disapprove for the simple fact that, uh, that folks out here have a problem and I think that we need to go back and review this and look to see if we can find another way to solve this future traffic problem that is coming. Uh, I don't see why we can't take the time to move it to the December, the next meeting to discuss it or have traffic, uh, do a study on that to give us more information on it. I just don't have enough of information at this time to say yes to this.
And I pretty much agree with just what Carlos said. I'd like to look at it at a future date.
Okay. Um, Les?
Uh, yeah, my concerns would be the same. It seems like there's some legitimate concerns about traffic entering and exiting at Old Cobblestone and I think we could view it a little bit more before we, uh, move forward.
Okay.
I agree with all the group. I think we need to study it a little bit more and I'd like to know, uh, is the developer here?
No, but I'm the, uh, property owner.
Oh, okay. What kind of houses are gonna be built there? Do you know? Are they gonna be patio homes or big homes or?
No, they, they would be similar to Old Cobblestone, but they'll be detached.
May I speak?
Yes.
The, uh, entrance to Old Cobblestone will not have any effect on the new development. I think it's been some, I wasn't here when it started, but it's some misunderstanding. I sold the property, Old Cobblestone, we had the agreement, we would buy the other property, and it was used for. Next year, and the other development, uh, now selling the property, the whole work, the whole.
Can you say, speak to the microphone, sir, and give us your name and address for the record?
I'm Greg Blythe from thirty-two oh-seven Old River Road, Decatur, Alabama. And as I said, uh, I don't know why the developer is not here tonight to, to speak to this because he may be out of town. But it was an agreed upon that entrance into Old Cobblestone has nothing to do with this new development. The new development, all the, all the entrance to the new development will be on Hardeman Road and not on Seagulls Road. There's no. They will not be able to come through there because they won't be connected.
Well, excuse me, excuse me, sorry. Thank you, sir. Uh, Jim, do you have any further comments?
What we could do is, is come back to the meeting, uh, n- next month and look at maybe not connecting to Old Cobblestone. Uh, and then there's no connection and their concerns of access and safety and additional cars, uh, could be allevi- alleviated. So I think that's an option for, for this tract and this property.
And, and Mr. McGuffey, as I understand it, as I'm looking at this, so the development would not connect to, uh, Old Cobblestone initially, uh, because there'll still be that space in between, the, the land that's in between the two of them. Ashley, if you'll show the, the, uh, map there. So the, there'll be two stub rows that, that won't meet at that time, so. Ms. Anderson?
In order, Mr. Chair, in order to consider sending this back for further review, the motion and, um, vote that was just made would have to be withdrawn.
Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion to withdraw, to have a motion to send this back for, uh, consideration. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So we, we have the vote and, and the items on the record and the item has, uh, has been denied. Is that, and that is sufficient. Thank you. We will move forward to item number ten. Uh, Kyle?
Item number ten, Sparks Farm, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The item passes.
Item number eleven, Taylor Court Commercial Subdivision. The committee recommends layout approval on sixteen lots and preliminary approval on two lots with a waiver on double-fronted lots fifteen and sixteen.
Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The item passes.
Um, agenda item number three, location, character, and extent. Item number one, I think that we postponed that, is that correct? Okay. Item number two, Spaces Sculpture.
Uh, so. So I'll accept a motion to postpone this to the following meeting. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? We will postpone this to the next meeting.
Item number two, Spaces Sculpture Trail, two thousand sixteen, a public hearing was held.
Is there a motion? Second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please note that I am recusing on this vote as well as Mr. Tillery. Uh, all those in favor? Any opposed? The item passes with, uh, Mr. Whitley and Mr. Tillery recusing. Thank you. Kyle?
Number three, the Huntsville-Madison Airport Warehouse Edition for the Port of Huntsville, a public hearing was held.
Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
I need to recuse on this one as well.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Agenda item four, the master plan update, Cummings Research Park, the public hearing was held.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Kyle?
Yeah, I'll just add one thing here for Ms. Reed's benefit. You, you worked in the research park. I make my living in the research park. This is something that I want to assure you is a good thing for the park. This is just for me personally. I was invited and, and, and went to many public meetings, which I felt like that the, that the chamber did a very admirable job of gaining the input from the stakeholders, property owners, people who manage and lease space in, in, in the park. And, and so I wanted to assure you, okay, because listen, I, I, I hate to admit this, I agree with a lot of stuff you say, okay? And you know I love you, but in this particular case, what they are doing is very, very important to the viability of this city. Yes. And with that, unfortunately, because I am a stakeholder, I will recuse myself from any further comment.
Thank you, Kyle. Is, is there any other discussion, input? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The item passes. That will take us, thank you, Kyle, to our zoning committee report. Mr. Tillery?
Yes, the zoning committee met on November the ninth and the following are our recommendations. Item one, Jordan Park rezoning, the public hearing was held.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The item passes.
Item two, Little Cove zoning, the public hearing was held.
Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The item passes.
Item three, Beetle Lane rezoning. The committee recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for December the twentieth.
Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item passes.
Item four is Mahaffey rezoning. The committee recommends the planning commission set a public hearing for December the twentieth.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Item five, Davis Circle rezoning. The committee recommends the planning commission set a public hearing for December the twentieth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Thank you. That takes us to item six, the invocation and extension of bonds. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, Mr. Chair, staff recommends the invocation of items one through four.
Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The item passes. That brings us to item seven, the election of officers. And we will start that process. Are there any nominations for chair?
I'd like to nominate Janet Watson.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Uh, yes, I'd like to nominate Les Tillery.
Okay. And any further nominations? Move to close nominations? All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have two nominations for chair, Janet Watson and Les Tillery. We will take the vote on Janet Watson. We will start, Ms. Krimcher. How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
TJ?
I guess nay, since I nominated Les.
All right.
Aye.
All right. Les? Okay, all right. Ms. Richard?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
All right. All right. Okay, all right. And so with, with, with that, Ms. Watson?
That's my vote, man.
For the record, yes, you may. Ms. Janet Watson has been re-elected unanimously as chair of the planning commission in her absence. Nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Gary Whitley.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Move to close nominations. All those in favor of re-electing Gary Whitley as vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, you do have that right. Okay, thank you. Gary Whitley has been re-elected unanimously as vice chair. We will now entertain nominations for commission treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Peggy Richard.
I'm sorry, I'm, excuse me. That was nominations for secretary.
Peggy.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Move to close nominations. All those in favor of Peggy Richard as planning commission secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Peggy Richard re-elected as secretary of planning commission and our last office treasurer. I will entertain nominations for the office of treasurer for the planning commission. Like to nominate Kelly Krimcher. Any other nominations? Move to close nominations. All those in favor of Kelly Krimcher serving as treasurer of the planning commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Kelly Krimcher has been re-elected as treasurer.
We need, we need to eliminate that position. It doesn't do anything. It's the best one to hold.
With that, is there any additional business to come before the planning commission? Hearing and seeing none, this meeting now stands adjourned. Thank you.